All right, we're gonna go ahead and call our Murfreesboro City Council meeting. This is our regular meeting workshop that we have at the airport. It's 11:30 on November 14th. If you'll bow with me, I'll say our prayer and then we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Father God, thank you for this chance that we get to be here today. Lord be with us. Lord, for those prayers that are spoken and unspoken. We continue to pray for our country. We pray for our state. We pray for our city. Lord, lift up those that need your help and your guidance. We love and you praise you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have one individual, Christopher Warren, 906 Prince Lane, that wants to speak about city school purchase of real property. And I guess our dashboard is Christopher here?
Yes, Christopher.
Christopher, I didn't say this, but it's three minutes. And if you'll keep everything directed to us. Okay, perfect.
This is not exactly the meeting that I expected. This is not a usual council meeting. And so I appreciate you allowing me to be here and speak today. I'm excited to see that there's an opportunity for the city schools to purchase new property, get the ball rolling on some new schools. That's great news. And I also saw on the previous agenda that you guys will be discussing the city schools' budget year-to-date. So it's good to see that you're taking such oversight on such an important function. I hope that we can all agree that a good education is an important part of what helps people to become their best selves. One thing that has made our nation great is the early understanding of the importance of public education for the good of our democracy. We need to have good, well-funded public schools. Our city schools in Murfreesboro have done a great job educating many of the most successful people in our community. I'm sure some of them are in this room. But there's never enough funding to give our students everything we want them to have. Competitive pay is important to recruit the best teachers. New books and devices are needed. And in this school district, we need to continue building more schools. Recently, the governor introduced a bill to create a voucher system that would greatly damage public schools in our state. This, of course, would deeply affect the city schools' ability to provide the best possible education for its students. The purpose sounds reasonable, to allow people to use funds set aside for their students to help pay tuition at another institution. But with the current proposal, if five people from one class decided to take that option, that class would lose over $35,000 in funding. Imagine if that happened to every class in one school or every class district-wide. The loss of funding would be catastrophic. The proposed vouchers would only partially cover private tuition, which means it would only be useful to those who already have means. This would lead to a much poorer education for people who aren't wealthy. In the United States, education is intended to be a way for upward mobility. Do we really want only the wealthy to have access to quality education? I'm here today on behalf of myself and the statewide organizing for Community Empowerment Public School Strong campaign to ask you as a council to adopt a resolution opposing this bill. The city school board and 71 other school districts have already passed such a resolution. Public School Strong has drafted a resolution to serve as a guide to groups across the state to let the governor and legislature know that these vouchers are not something this state wants. So I ask you as a council to please consider passing such a resolution. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Warren. All right, we'll now move into action items. You have ordnance 24OZ36 amending the PUD zoning for property along Robert Rose Drive. And this is second and final reading.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater, Ms. Gills Harris, Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, ordnance 24OZ37 zoning property along New Salem Highway, second and final reading.
So moved.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Gills Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Ordnance 24OZ38 rezoning property, excuse me, along Greenland Drive, second and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Gills Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Ordnance 24OZ39 rezoning property along Hazelwood Street. This is second and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Gills Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll move to item five, the Tennessee State Museum Grant.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. I'm here to request to accept the grant for maintenance and improvements for the museum and cotton warehouse at Cannonsburg Village. The Haynes Museum and Cotton Warehouse located within Cannonsburg is the only building original to the property and needs repairs to the foundational infrastructure and roof. We were, we applied for and were awarded this grant through the Tennessee State Museum. The cost, the total cost of the project is $150,000. Grant funds are $50,000, and the additional $100,000 for this project would be used with current CIP funds available and allocated specifically for Cannonsburg improvements. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Rachel, I have a question. It may be good for Nate, if you wouldn't mind coming up real quick. Nate, have, I don't want to make this like a government house oversight committee.
You're out of order.
It doesn't seem like it's trending in the right direction. I think we should let Rachel answer this question.
I think I want to ask, I want to ask a question on behalf of the entire council.
Yes.
Have you ever had conversation with any council member about us tearing down Cannonsburg?
Never, one conversation.
Is there any discussion within the city hall or city government about moving or tearing down Cannonsburg?
Yeah, zero conversation. The only conversations we've had are situations like this where we're making improvements to the facilities. And we just hired a new coordinator for the facility. We're kind of moving it in a new direction and enhancing what we have. So no conversations like that.
I just wanted to say that on the public record with some of the information that came out yesterday, that there is no diabolical plan that we're gonna tear down or move Cannonsburg.
Or build apartments on the site.
Or build apartments or townhomes or...
Yeah.
Or Dollar General.
Or Dollar General.
And a Mexican restaurant.
Mexican restaurant.
Yeah, our only intention is...
Fried pickles on toots. But there's just a lot of this conjecture out there about we're looking to improve the area in the downtown. We're not looking to tear it down. And it's just not a narrative out there that's just false.
Yeah, mayor, we're looking at plans. Rachel and her team are doing a great job coming up with ways to really revitalize Cannonsburg Village with the existing structures and improve those structures to make it more of a viable place to go for families and visitors in Murfreesboro.
Okay. Sorry, Rachel, I didn't want to put you on the spot, but we don't care about putting Nate on the spot.
Thanks.
You're dismissed now, Nate.
Rachel, I'll just add, in two years, 2026, it'll be our 250th anniversary. So combined with the Daylighting Project, it's the Town Creek Project, and then this, I think it's ever more important, you know, stuff like this that makes Cannonsburg a viable part and actually will help take up its game. And I'm like the mayor and Sean, I'm not in favor of doing anything to Cannonsburg, so...
I'm glad you brought that up, councilman. With the staff, we've had a lot of conversations with the anniversary coming up. And this, this project would be great to have this completed and be able to open that up again.
And you're referring to the project that we're getting ready to vote on?
Right.
Not the alleged project that's out there?
No.
Okay.
About the alleged project too?
Yeah, you're welcome to.
Let's go ahead and talk about the alleged project. Has anybody since the alleged project was presented to us last year, has anybody worked with Jason Stone at all?
Rose.
Yeah, sorry. About a baseball field coming to that site between staff and council? I'm not aware of any conversations with anybody since that time, but I saw renderings yesterday for the first time, just like everybody else in town. And those weren't done by the city or anybody associated with the city. That's Jason Rose and his organization by themselves. Is that correct, to everybody else?
No conversations.
Yeah.
No discussion.
So it's not some malicious city project that we're trying to shove down people's throats, right?
I think that's very fair. Sorry, Rachel, that Cannonsburg didn't open the door.
You slid right through it.
All right, we have this before us. Do we have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Gills Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Thank you, Rachel. All right, we'll move to fiscal year '25 capital improvement plan, CIP budget.
Thank you. We're presenting the FY25, or FY25 CIP for approval today. This was reviewed with council at last month's retreat. Since we did not borrow in FY24, we're asking to increase the CIP from $55 million to $70 million. The total CIP has not changed from what was presented last month, but there are a few adjustments in clerical and admin corrections to the projects. The most significant adjustments are increasing the additional city facilities by $900,000, and we pushed design for the fire training facility out one year. This also includes $24 million, as presented last month, from general fund for the solid waste transfer station. I'm happy to answer any questions and recommend for approval.
Any questions? All right, can we get a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Gills Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll move to fiscal year '25 budget amendment. This is ordnance 24044 on first reading.
Yes, we have this budget amendment for consideration today. It has several items, including adjustments for grant revenues and expenses, including community development grants, multiple police grants, and to recognize a Parks and Rec, American Battlefield Trust grant. We also have payroll-related adjustments, including increasing the full-time headcount for legal, for an additional attorney that will eventually transition to a part-time position, adjusting a part-time Bloomfield Links position to full-time based on increased usage of that golf course. And then, excuse me, after conducting a comparison study of where we stand in paying class versus Nashville, we're also proposing changes to our class and comp plan, including reclassifying employees and pay grades 119 to 126, up one pay grade, and then staggered cost of living increases with the lower pay grades receiving a 5% increase, the middle pay grades receiving a four and a half, and then the highest pay grades receiving a 3% increase. So similar to the adjustments made in public safety, we believe these adjustments will improve our ability to recruit and retain employees citywide and also manage compression within the pay grades. And then we're looking to balance these adjustments by increasing the budget for sales tax and hotel motel, hotel motel tax revenues, and then trimming our budgeted expenses in training and travel, repairs and maintenance, and supplies citywide. Also, for one-time funding, we're requesting $250,000 as an interfund transfer from general fund to the newly formed Sports Authority. We'll bring back a Sports Authority budget resolution in a few weeks as well. And then we have the $24 million as part of the CIP that council just approved for the solid waste transfer station. So after all of these adjustments, the fiscal impact is a one-time use of unassigned fund balance of $24.25 million and then an actual increase to unassigned fund balance of about $340,000 for operational and grant purposes. This amendment also proposes these same pay adjustments be applied at airport fund, water resources, and stormwater fund employees as well. Airport's payroll adjustments will increase their expenditures by $25,000 and are included in this budget amendment. Water and stormwater pay increases will likely be balanced by reducing their planned increases to reserves, but we may look at coming back later in the year with a budget amendment for them if needed. Drug fund also needs an amendment to rebudget $290,000 for items that were ordered in FY24 but not received before year-end. And that's everything. I'm happy to answer any questions and recommend for approval.
Can you repeat that?
I could.
I move for approval.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Gills Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll move to a letter of intent for city schools to purchase real property. Director Duke.
Good afternoon. Has anybody contacted you about Cannonsburg?
No. I'd be happy to pass that along directly to you, Councilman Maxwell. You want to take those? I'll be happy to do that, if that happens.
I'm gonna whip out a Bible and start having people raise their right hand.
Good afternoon again. This afternoon, the city schools is seeking approval to issue a letter of intent to pursue negotiations related to the acquisition of 910 Ridgely Road, which would be used for a new transportation and maintenance facility at our school district. Our city school staff has been working with the city staff for several years to find an adequate replacement for our current 8,800-square-foot facility, which is located on New Salem Highway. In addition to no longer meeting the needs of the city schools, the city has potential development plans for the area where the current building is located. City Schools has identified a 47,000-square-foot building that would meet our current needs and provide a long-term solution for the transportation and maintenance facility. Additionally, the city of Murfreesboro would use an approximate 8% of the building to meet space and facility needs. The letter of intent was approved by our school board on Tuesday the 12th, and it would allow us to begin official conversations around negotiating a purchase and sale agreement. The letter of intent is not binding to any party. The project would be funded through several funding sources, including county shared bonds, which are already allocated and approved for the project, the city schools' general fund unassigned fund balance, and the city's general fund for the building, the portion of the building they would be utilizing for the property. I do have a few pictures just to orient the council on this. If you've driven down New Salem, and now as they've done the road renovations, if you look down from New Salem, you will see our current location, again, it's about 8,800 square feet. The new location, new possible location is 910 Ridgely Road. To kind of orient you, it's off Old Fort and Broad behind the Chewies, probably is the easiest way to describe where it is. And there's an aerial footage that shows the adequate parking we would need, as well as the space. Here's some rear view pictures for you showing the loading docks, which is something we currently do not have at our current facility, which would be very helpful for us in our purchasing, as well as a gated area where we could secure our maintenance vehicles. And then finally, you can see the floor plan is divided up into multiple suites that we would use with the primary ones in this BCD area that would serve as our bus base for us to do work on the buses. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have, and I'm sure Mr. Huddleston would answer any, as well, or as Mr. Bart. We're making a team effort if there's questions.
Trey, this has been discussed for a long time.
Long time.
But do you feel comfortable where you are with this?
Very comfortable.
Okay. There's no questions, I move for approval. Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Gills Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we will move to CIP transfers. Almost, Robert.
Just if there's any questions, this is just our routine transfers that we present to you.
Questions for Aaron? Move for approval.
No votes needed on these items.
Okay. All right, now we'll move to update on downtown Murfreesboro community plan phase one.
Good afternoon, mayor and council members. If you recall, on February 1st, 2023, the council approved a contract with KDGI Solutions to prepare a phase one for the downtown Murfreesboro community planning study, which we also refer to as the downtown study. This phase of the study is almost complete, and we felt it was time to present what we have come up with to council. This phase involved conducting interviews with downtown business owners, collaborating with Main Street Murfreesboro, and developing inventories of downtown space utilization. The study will provide recommendations and guidance in the development of a long-range community development action plan, where a vision is defined for economic development and community growth, including housing options, opportunities for small business, infrastructure improvements. The main objective of the study is to make a thorough assessment of the downtown community to provide the city of Murfreesboro and stakeholders critical decision-making tools to help guide the prioritization of improvements and economic development. The phase one study recommendations provide a comprehensive framework that fosters the creation of guiding principles, such as bolstering the downtown Murfreesboro neighborhood character, creation of balance between preservation and new growth, encouraging activation and use of existing buildings, and promoting economic vitality. The next phase, which will be phase two, will be brought to y'all in the near future as an action item. In the meantime, Brandon Harvey is here with KDGI to do a short presentation for you. If y'all have any questions, we'll begin to answer.
All right, good afternoon, mayor and council and all the authorities of the city. Just happy to be in your presence this afternoon to give you an update on what we've been talking about with local business owners, what we've been in conversation about with even Main Street and other participants, other stakeholders in the community. KDGI, Kingdom Development Group Incorporated, we established ourselves in 2016, but it wasn't until 2021 that we relocated, we located our business right on the corner of Main and Maple. So not only am I talking to you all as a consultant to the city, I'm also speaking to you as a tenant of downtown Murfreesboro, and I get to experience the realities of the city's growth. So with the, as a brief introduction, I do have slides on the screen, and those of you viewing in live audience, we do have a presentation, only nine pages, that, again, I did you the courtesy of not handing you this really heavy document of pages, but rather let me tell you the story from the perspective of your consultant and also from someone living from day to day and the experiences of a tenant. So Kingdom Development Group, we are architects, we're also planners, and we are interiors, but we endeavor to be a neighborly friend and consultant as Murfreesboro is experiencing an uptick in growth. As you all know, Rutherford County has experienced a 20% growth in just 10 years. And we are one of the largest, we are the largest neighboring cities in Nashville. We are experiencing growth, which also comes along with new demands and increased needs, right? So we need to address some of those things in our community, which the city is actively doing. Today, we're talking specifically about the downtown community, and that's, we reference the square proper as the downtown community planning study area. It certainly goes beyond that, but I want to cover a few bases today to describe the needs. So in this summary page here, the purpose here is to really talk about how the city and local business owners can merge the agendas, the efforts, the endeavors to improve what we already have. One thing that's characteristic of Murfreesboro is that it's not a homogenized town. It's quaint, it has a lot of character, and it has a lot of fabric that succeeds it. It has historic character, it has new things, old things all combined together. How do we marry these things together? How do we assess the underutilized assets that are on second and third level, even first level, of some of the buildings that we all know and love, right? So our, our job as, not just designers, but planners, to really think hard about what we have and how we make it a better asset and increase the vitality of downtown Murfreesboro. So all in all, this study is gonna provide a roadmap for sustainable and inclusive development to address the unique needs and aspirations of community residents. So one thing as a consultant that I always have to be cognizant of in the company is that we're not just making recommendations, we're not just identifying problems. We have to prescribe solutions that involve you. So as a consultant to the city, we've taken into considerations that the city also has to have influence and let those stakeholders and owners and those, that are transplants, know that the city has a stake in this. Now, while we're not an official government organization, we do represent you all. And this study is providing that roadmap to marry owners and city to tie those resources together to make improvements. So I do have some, you know, just a few facts that show local and national growth trends, and we know that there's been a, what I call a suburban to urban conversion. That's happened over the last decade, where people are now interested again in downtown living, city life. How can I work, play, live in those locations? So we had to make an assessment of what we currently have. So there was five objectives that drove this planning study. That was to gain an understanding of the current and future needs that reflect everyone's perspectives and aspirations for our community. We did a cursory investigation, and surely this was cursory because we couldn't do a forensic study of every single building and every tenant of the square. We had to identify and answer the question, what is the public benefit if this does happen? We have to address housing and economic development opportunities. We have to include that with this growth. We can't not see that this uptick brings along new demands and needs, but we don't want anyone to get left out of this new experience. We had to also identify barriers to achieving deactivation of these underutilized spaces, and then finally provide guidance to develop a long-range plan. The first part of, the first focus area was the inventory of spaces. Being a tenant, we understand renovations, we understand every, every factor going into, going to a space that hasn't received any renovations since 1994, a building that was, that was built in 1869. So there's a long list of things that go along with such a thing that would encourage economic development opportunities. We created a database, multiple pages of every building that has two or more stories on the square proper, and we've gathered information from tenants, from realtors, from property managers. We've even worked with Sarah Callender with Main Street to kind of gather information that maybe isn't public knowledge. We've created several maps, including a base map, just a downtown business mix, and also the suitability for businesses or residential, which all exist in our downtown area. So this information, in summary, is gonna be used to inform how we strategically plan and grow and develop our downtown community. The second of these focus areas looks at infrastructural obstacles. There's been, there's been conversations with some of our local utilities about, you know, what is currently there, what the need is. That includes electrical, water, sewer, stormwater, and there's several other layers that go along with infrastructure that would need to be addressed along with these updates. And if, in this focus area, we stay broad, we can later comb through building for building and identify, you know, one small problem that could become a large problem, or maybe not, right? This gave us an opportunity to really just kind of look at a high level of what's around downtown. I think we all know that it's complicated, to say the least. It's very complicated with the infrastructure we have. But how does that pose a problem when we want to create new opportunities? You know, what is the impediment to creating a space or adaptively reusing it? The third focus area was identifying, really third and fourth areas, were identifying what we would, what we would categorize as public realm obstacles versus owner obstacles. So this, this is deciding who takes care of what. Surely the city can't set aside funds to pay for what an owner should take care of, but there are things that the city can do to encourage private funding participation. So we recognize that some public realm obstacles, such as streets and streetscaping, wayfinding, lighting, plazas, those are things that the city can participate in, while owners can look at the facade and interiors and climate control, things that the city wouldn't directly pay for. But there has to be a conversation between owners and city to decide on how we can come together and make this happen. So beyond those five objectives, that's all put... So beyond those five objectives, that's all put into a report and buttoned up nicely, but we can't simply make a report and it become obsolete on the shelf. It has to grow feet, we have to put this thing into action. So, so what we're doing now in the conversation is providing recommendations for a Community Development Action Plan. How do you, how do you put things into action? Yeah, it costs money, it takes a strategic, short and long-term plan. What we do know about the city is that the city of Murfreesboro has long been an entitlement of community development block grant funds. That's an umbrella fund that I can say proudly that I've worked for HUD for a number of years on the grant side and understand that when you have a plan together and you recognize that there's a public benefit to receiving the funding, things can happen. There, there are several eligible, eligible activities that we've identified can be paid for through this one source of funding. Now, I'm not saying CDBG is the only fund we can use to make this thing happen, but it certainly is something we have accessible now. Some of those items that are eligible are like acquisition of real property, public facility improvements, demolition, privately owned utilities, and there's other areas that we've recognized are eligible to be used for the funding. We've also generated a diagram that you see here on the screen of a sample building. There's several components that we could begin to separate and identify transformational projects that would encourage private investment. We took it a step further and began combing through the hundreds of pages that are out there on achieving, defining what an eligible activity is. There's activities, there's requirements, but there's also outcomes. So, so from a design perspective, we can call out these components, components such as facade enhancement, accessibility, structure, plumbing, those things can be itemized as a individual project. Once you've done that, you can identify projects and it becomes a plan. This might be a start to how we make this thing become actionable. The last thing we did upon request of the city is put together a development scenario. Can this thing actually work? Is this thing just a story you're telling that, that can or cannot come true? Truth is, it's already happening, and we're living it as tenants in downtown. What we did is looked at, looked at a work-life scenario in a community that is very similar to Murfreesboro. There's factors for developing, for example, the work-life space, it requires renovation, clearly defined goals, the cost-benefit analysis, understanding building, building codes and zoning regs, historical significance, there's a number of considerations that go into this. But in short, this development scenario begins to call out that you can look at an individual building, begin to compartmentalize what can be taken care of to make housing opportunities or economic development opportunities a real thing in the downtown Murfreesboro district. So ultimately, just to summarize here, the end goal is to identify actionable projects that can lead to a concerted effort between the city of Murfreesboro and private building owners to drive economic growth, enhance community aesthetic, and increase housing availability. So I'll, I'll leave the study there because I'm, I'm interested in any questions that may be on the floor about what's happening with the community study.
A really good start. This looks good.
So you've done a blueprint, if we approve all this, of how we're going to look in the future, the downtown, the renovation and the benefits of it and all.
Yes, ma'am. So, so yes, Councilwoman, we have definitely looked into what, what a compelling vision can be, but before we get to, you know, what the compelling vision is, we must establish kind of the roots, you know, like what, what, what's beneath the surface, what are those impediments and barriers at entry that we have to define first, address those things to kind of allow for the growth that we all want in downtown Murfreesboro.
Have you looked at any of the impacts of maybe blocking off traffic around the outer square, similar to like Market Square in Knoxville, where you bring the sidewalks out, bring economic, the, the businesses out to the sidewalks, maybe put a permanent stage out like Market Square has? I think they've even got an ice rink during the winter time where it's just an economic driver and not necessarily through, with through traffic.
Yes, sir. So, yes, Sean, Councilman, Sean, we, we've talked to a few local developers and even we've had our own in-house ideas to expand and create plazas, create more walkable spaces, less the car, more about the person and the experience, and we've looked at, and I've had the pleasure of serving on the Wayfinding Committee and looking at how the city might even think about downtown and districts that might encourage how we grow. One, one thing I might bring up, and I've said this once before in the room, but I'll say it again out loud, many, many, many years ago, West Lawn along, along Veterans Parkway, there was always a monumental sign there. There was no growth, no development, just a sign. But here recently, you've seen just an uptick of growth, development, commercial, residential shopping, and now it's known as the West Lawn District. What happened first, we identified that it should be a district, it should be a location. Downtown Murfreesboro, like, much like Market Square in Knoxville, I love what they, I love the change, how they've taken back their downtown away from, in Knoxville, Turkey Creek, to all of their, their crowds away from downtown, but I think if we encourage, you know, our quaint, you know, downtown to grow as such, I think we can create a model just like that.
Thank you.
Could I, I know the area is kind of limited as to what you were studying to kind of see where we are, and did you include some of the prospects for, I hate to use the word again, but Cannonsburg? Have you, have you even thought about, I mean, you know, because I know that the vision for our downtown is, one of them is to grow our downtown, to have a larger, I guess.
If you talk about a baseball field, there's a trapdoor button right here that I'm going to hit. Hey, so, well, I've never said this, but there's a trapdoor that automatically gets transported to Mount Stinkmore down the road, so.
Oh, my goodness, so a baseball stadium, no, I'm just joking. So, so yes, we, we've looked at what, what impacts that would have. We've actually talked to a couple of developers about verticality, taking things up. We do have, we have some, we have some, some decent amount of, I guess, zoning provisions that allows us to go vertical. We might have to go dense on the parking and go vertical, more layers. I think it, it'll require density, and I'm glad you brought that up, and I'll just, I'll just insert this nugget here. So talking to local developers about building density in downtown, it's possible, once you've gone through a PUD and you have, you know, ever so many feet of limitations of height, you can definitely encourage parking structures, you can, you can encourage mixed-use development. It's already in downtown, it's not something we haven't already done. If you look at the Rutherford County Judicial Project, I worked on that building, by the way, it stacks up really high. If you look at NHC, it stacks up really high, but what they've also done is condensed and made these parking garages that allow for that verticality. And so Murfreesboro is not new to verticality. I think that's one of the answers. I think also looking at options for rooftops on some of the existing two and three-level structures. It's been done in Nashville, it's been done in other cities, Naperville, Illinois, I mean, just many locations can do that.
So what's the next step?
So the next step, well, so I guess it depends on how we look at it. I mean, from a developer point, point of view, we're encouraging plans and getting in front of city planning to talk about what's possible. On the consultant side to the city, we are encouraging, looking at action items in the next phase that would encourage developers to come in and not say, this building needs to be sprinkled on all levels, and right now that cost is significant and it's going to kill my project, can you help me? If the city agrees, yes, I can help you run a line that goes up one way and through six buildings on a block and encourages tapping in, for example, that might be an actionable project. So I think there's several ways we can identify individual projects that will encourage owners to get involved.
I appreciate this work, but I think you, the one of the first statements you made, a document is just a document if it sits on the shelf once you've done it. So I think getting to actionable items and moving something forward would be so that as a result of the study, something was moving could justify the study and, and the work that you've already done. I appreciate all the work that went into preparing the document, but like you say, we, we need to claim some ground downtown, you know, to actually say, okay, it's, the study was worthwhile because it led us to this action, and so anyway, and that's not necessarily on your shoulders, but on our shoulders, basically, encourage and, and the development community say, let's get something as a result of this, we did this.
Do you feel like parking will be something, like additional parking downtown is a need and would be something that would spur some of this development?
Yes, absolutely.
So having more parking is advantageous to, to spur this on?
Yes, I mean, with, with the couple of developments we've looked at, concepts, they both involve structured parking garages.
Okay.
And I think that those developers have also thought that it'll be a courtesy to add more parking for public, not, not just the private, private owners or corporate or housing, but just include a little more. And I think, I think that parking, the parking, parking is a problem, I'll just say that. I'm, I'm one that plays, and I'm sorry for openly admitting this, that I play that two-hour shuffle being, being on the square, I think a lot of us do.
We've all done that.
Yeah, parking is, is a big problem. It is one of those biggest, one of the bigger impediments.
All right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So this, it was a great, informative presentation, some things you said that I was excited about, you know, things that can happen. So with you being the consultant on this, are you asking us to give you some action items or?
Yes.
I'm just, how we ended this, are you asking for I, action items from us as a council? Are you asking us to approve what you have said?
Yes, I, I am, I am seeking approval for Phase Two to define those action items and put, and make them actual individual projects.
That, that will, so do we, Robert, are we, I think we all would be on board with Phase Two, but will that come in the form of like another contract or is?
Yes, sir, that's one of the future actionable items.
Okay, yeah, but that's not a decision we make today.
We're just updating on what we've done and make sure we want to keep going forward.
And there, there's another question, like, how does this fit into the funding structure with our current Community Development Department? Is it, is this, are we pulling CD, CDBG money or how are we?
We can, yes, and we bank some of it for a few years that we could use, but I mean, it's limited. We get almost a million dollars in CDBG, some of that goes to admin, down payment assistance we have, but we can bank some of that to help us fund some of it.
There's going to be a likelihood that this Community Development Action Plan that we're talking about, that there could be additional grant funding that we could, we could look for. Okay.
So we're given, I'm sorry to keep asking this, you've done Phase One, financially we're okay on Phase One. Phase Two is what you're looking for us for approval, for you all to start looking at Phase Two?
Yeah, that, that will come in December, maybe January.
Okay, so in other words, he's just reporting on what has been done?
He's just updating, there's no action to be taken unless you have questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well done.
All right, thanks much. Let's move to Robert.
Yes.
So Greg asked me impromptu to come up here and update you on something else that Community Development's working on, so we are required every five years to prepare a con plan that we use to analyze homelessness, affordable housing, how much housing we're shortage on. I mean, it's a thick document. This will be the first time I've gone through it, so I'm not sure what to expect yet, but it includes several public meetings. We plan on bringing it to council in May, but we are working hard on our con plan for the next five years.
Are any of those meetings going to be held at Cannonsburg?
Thanks, Paul Field. No, just kidding.
All right, any, any questions on the September dashboard? All right, seeing that, I don't think we have any board and commission appointments. Do we have any beer permits? None, no statements to be paid. All right, we do have one, some information that we got yesterday, Darren, I'll turn it over to you for other business.
Yes, sent an email out earlier this morning, we got something yesterday afternoon from Mark Brown, Waste Away, to kind of basically frame a, a deal structure that would mitigate or alleviate any risk to the city. So after having reviewed that, putting that forward to you all, we've invited Mark to come and kind of just go through those talking points and get some feedback from you all to see if, how you'd like to proceed, if this meets with your approval on, again, mitigating risk to any public money. So Mark, come on up.
I'll ask Darren if I should prepare a PowerPoint. He told me, look, you're at the end, so just get through what you're saying fast and everyone will appreciate it, so.
I didn't say that.
You said something like that. But anyway, thank you to the mayor and the council for this opportunity to talk about this project, and I will be as brief as I can. As, as all of you know, two years ago, we entered into an agreement to work together to end the city's dependence on, as the mayor called it a few moments ago, Mount Stinkmore, and we've worked very diligently to, to do that. In the course of the past two years, we've designed, we've engineered, we've researched, we've had third parties come in and, and look at the information, and a few weeks ago, we delivered a, a report to Darren that was, what about that, Dick, Darren? That with kind of reviewing all that information and kind of finishing up the, the phase under that contract. So today, if we're going to take that information and move forward, we have to understand the best way to, to pay for the project, and that's what this handout that Darren sent out and that we'd submitted looks at doing. I know this was talked about a little bit at the retreat, and as we've worked on the ideas that were discussed there, I think we've improved them quite a bit from a risk mitigation point of view. Real quick, I think everybody remembers what we're talking about, but just to go through it, the project is designed to take 140,000 tons of municipal solid waste that's currently produced by the city. We would capture the recyclables and those would be sold into the various markets. We would be producing renewable natural gas, and also the, the final end product with anything that couldn't be used otherwise would be a solid fuel, a low-carbon solid fuel that's available to be used in the cement kilns. And so as we originally started the project two years ago, the, the idea was the Solid Waste Authority would be formed, and we would use non-recourse revenue bonds issued by the Solid Waste Authority, and we always knew because the Solid Waste Authority was a new entity with no history, that there would be some city guarantees required for this new entity to be able to issue the bonds. But as we've worked through the, the various rules and looked at the various options in front of us, once again, under that old structure, the, the Solid Waste Authority would issue the bonds and then loan the money to the, the private company that would, would operate the facility. We've actually formed a project company just as a, a starting point that's called Murfreesboro Renewable Energy, so that would be the company that would operate the facility. And, but as we got to looking at it, there are some significant advantages if rather than loaning money to the entity operating the facility, if the city and/or Solid Waste Authority actually owns the equipment and then leases that, which effectively it's the same money, but there are advantages to the city actually owning the equipment. The first advantage and one that probably drove the decision, there's, under the Inflation Reduction Act, there's an income tax credit that's available that would amount to about $34 million for this project, and if the city and/or Solid Waste Authority owns that equipment, they would receive 100% of those funds, so all of that 34 million would be available to go into the project and, and lower rates for the, the users. If the private company uses that money, we get a tax credit, and in order to use that to build the facility, we have to effectively factor that tax credit. So we get what I've been told is going to be roughly 65 cents on the dollar, so we lose, or the project loses $10 million when we do that. So if the city owns the equipment, we get 34 million, if the project owns the equipment, we get 24 million. The other advantage to the city owning the equipment, if something- $24 million. The other advantage to the city owning the equipment, if something did go wrong, if the city owns the equipment, you have the collateral value of that equipment. So you would have title to all of the equipment. As we've said, there's, currently, we're looking at $80 million worth of equipment. I've added 5.5 million, which is just 5% contingency because we all know there'll be some more fees and things that show up as this thing moves forward. But, so if you own the equipment, you have the collateral value. So that means in the event something goes wrong, you can sell that equipment. Now, all of this equipment will not have value other than as scrap steel, let's be honest. But a lot of it does. We have dryers, we have shredders, we have magnets and eddy currents and other pieces of equipment that can be readily sold. So I'm projecting very conservatively, out of $80 million of equipment, if something went wrong and the city owns the equipment, you should easily be able to recover at least $20 million by selling that equipment at some point in the future. So once again, if you own the, the equipment, you're guaranteed that you've got some money you can recover there. And then to totally, you know, finish out and, and cover the, any risk the city has, Waste Away and Hitachi Zozanano, who's the company we're working with that will be providing the digestors, between Hitachi and Waste Away, we will provide either performance bonds or tech risk insurance to ensure the balance of the monies that the cities would, would be potentially liable for. So we can mitigate all of the risk. I know what was discussed at the workshop, we hadn't thought about the collateral of the equipment, so we thought there might be some hole in the financing that the city would be taking the risk on. But in this way, we're able to fully mitigate all the risk to the city for the, using those three pieces. So let me stop real quick at this point. Are there questions? Does that make sense?
What amount would they have to issue in bonds in total?
You know, as currently anticipating, I'm recommending 85.5 million in bonds. Those would be private activity bonds. And once we get the Solid Waste Authority formed, it could actually be the entity that issues those bonds. Now, Mr. Maxwell, we all know when the lawyers and the brokers get involved, there may be some small changes in these numbers for their fees, but that's, that's the best number I have available today.
It says here that 34 million is through the ITC, the investment tax credit, and that would retire 40% of those bonds in year three.
Correct.
So the remaining amount, how long would those bonds be out there?
You know, we can structure that. However, the, the city wants to structure it. Obviously, 20-year bonds are common. If you want to lower your user fees, you can stretch that out to 25 or 30 years if you chose to. And that would, you know, lower your user fees proportionately, but that, that would be a city decision.
Mark, any other question?
No.
Shane?
No.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the problem with all, well, not problem, I guess, but the rush in all of this is unfortunately, in order to guarantee that the city would receive that $34 million covering 40% of the cost of the project, we've got to take some actions quickly. Under the Inflation Reduction Act, we are required to actually purchase at least 5% of the equipment in this calendar year or by the end of this calendar year. And so in order to make that happen, there are two or three different ways in the legislation that you can accomplish that. And the attorneys we've been working with, and we've hired some, some experts in the field that, that are doing this on a national basis, and they are saying because this is a, a new program, even though it's two years old at this point, it's, in federal terms, it's still a new program. They were still issuing new rules on this two months ago. So, but anyway, they are recommending that if you're counting on $34 million, you do belt and suspenders. And in that case, by belt and suspenders, one way you can, can lock up the money and meet the IRS regulations is a safe harbor of paying 5% in this calendar year. And so the proposal in the, the information I sent you would propose entering into a purchase order for an initial equipment order this year of $5.5 million. The reason we're saying let's do a piece of it now is obviously we need time in next year to form the Solid Waste Authority, negotiate contracts between Waste Away and the Solid Waste Authority, do a bond issue. There are a lot of steps that need to happen that, there's no way they could happen in this calendar year. And then the, the second way under the Inflation Reduction Act that we can guarantee those funds on behalf of the city is to do substantial construction in this year. And by substantial construction, we're not talking about building the building. In fact, that's actually excluded from counting. It's got to be building equipment. And so as quickly as we could get this contract negotiated, approved, and, and funded, Waste Away and some of our subcontractors would immediately begin producing equipment in this calendar year. And working with my subs, I believe we could accomplish a couple of million dollars of, of physical work in this calendar year. And our attorneys are telling us that should easily meet the requirement of starting substantial construction in this calendar year. And, but, but like I said, either or could count, but our attorneys are recommending we do both, just as belt and suspenders and to be as, as safe as we possibly can. Ensuring, obviously, we're talking about $34 million. We don't want the IRS to come back and say, oh, you didn't dot an I or cross a T at some point. From the, the city's point of view, what we would be doing to secure this particular $5.5 million, we can issue an irrevocable letter of credit guaranteeing the contract. Obviously, if you're advancing funds, I assume that's city policy, you're going to need some kind of bond or letter of credit or something to secure that. And then the contract calls for, in the event that everything didn't work out, we don't come up with a funding plan that's acceptable to the city next year, then the unspent funds would be returned to the city, and the city would have title to any equipment that had been produced to that point as well as any, you know, work in progress. So all of the money, all the $5.5 million would come back to the city either in the form of cash or equipment and work in progress. Obviously, we would work with you to help you resell that and recruit as much of that money as we could. And unfortunately, and this is where, you know, Darren and I were even talking this morning, speed is of the essence. In order to, you know, maximize the city's position in this, the more physical work that we can do in this calendar year, the better. And that means the faster we can get a contract issued, you know, I've got people lined up and ready to start work, but once again, under the federal guidelines, any work we do prior to issuance of a contract doesn't count. And so, once again, the lawyers are recommending we will be taking pictures of work performed, we will be supplying that to the city in, in weekly or monthly reports. And, you know, all that'll go in a folder for someday when the IRS asks, did you really, truly start work in 2024? And we'll have the evidence to say, yes, we did. So.
I, I got a couple of questions.
Sure.
Sounds like the cart's running over the horse. But the, if we approve $5.5 million of taxpayer money to do this, and then let's say next year, you said there's all these other things that have to happen, whether the Solid Waste Authority has set up good contracts, do this, do that. Then you also said this product is pretty much, you said basically worth scrap metal if we do it.
A part of it is, not all of it, yes.
It, it just seems like an enormous amount of risk for the city taxpayers for a bunch of stuff that still hasn't happened on the back end. And if it doesn't happen, we got a bunch of risk. And that's a tenth of a school that we're putting out there for something that's not buttoned up.
Yeah. And I can, can understand that position. That's a very legitimate question. You know, realistically, in this calendar year, if everything went as we're hoping, we could hope to spend as much as $2 million of that, and the rest would still be available to recover. So realistically, it's, it's a $2 million risk. And obviously, the city's already spent more than that on this project. So, but absolutely, there is some risk here. You know, we are very confident that we'll be able to negotiate contracts that will work for everyone. And obviously, you know, the bond issue is just a matter of taking the steps to accomplish that.
The irrevocable, explain the irrevocable letter of credit on that $5.5 million, if you would, Mark.
I mean, that's just a letter from the bank, obviously, that, that guarantees those funds. It says, you know, we, we will honor the terms of the contract. So that, that just ensures that the, any unspent monies are returned to the city and the title of the equipment and, and the work in progress. And once again, as I said earlier, most of that money should be recoverable. It may take a few months to sell that equipment, but we should be able to recover that, that portion of it.
Is there some reason that private funds, because our assumption when this project came to us was it was going to be privately funded. Is there some reason that?
I agree with that. Yeah, I, you know, obviously, that was our original intent, was to do it with private funding through the revenue bonds by the Solid Waste Authority. And as we've worked with the bond issuers, they've told us, look, you've got a Solid Waste Authority that doesn't exist, doesn't have a track record of having any revenues. And so issuing bonds on an entity with no history and no revenues is problematic. And, and even then, we knew some form of city guarantees were going to be required for the newly formed Solid Waste Authority. This new structure, like I said, has a couple of, of positive things from the city's point of view, in that we get to keep $10 million more money in the project because the, the private funding has to factor that. So we're, we're keeping $10 million in the project to lower rates for the users. And, and then once again, this way, you actually have the collateral value of the equipment. So it actually gives the city more security. Because as, as I've discussed before, you know, the Solid Waste Authority ultimately would have the, the city guarantees behind it. But we all know the Solid Waste Authority, the city's going to, if it didn't have a legal obligation, it's at least going to have a moral obligation not to let us, the Murfreesboro Solid Waste Authority go bankrupt. So, and, and ultimately, and I know you've seen numbers in past presentations that Darren's done, the Solid Waste Authority, you know, what we're talking about, if, if it had issues, if, if something's not exactly right, it's just going to have to raise the user's fees in order to process this waste. And, and it's still going to be the cheapest option that, that's available for processing waste once, you know, Mount, our middle point's no longer an option.
I mean, I think the merits of the project have some viability. I, I think each, you know, we're not going to make an $85 million decision sitting at the table today. And, that's what I shared, you know, with Darren, that I felt very confident that the council would not. The $5 million number is still a huge number, but it's the tail that comes along with that. So I think council members are, are going to need to have some discussions with Darren over the next week, you know, when, and, and then ask some questions. And as Darren sees the appetite, then I think that's where the next step could proceed. And some of that discussion may need to, not about this project, but there's some other discussions I think we're going to have today in executive session in regards to other things with solid waste that we need to factor into that. But, I mean, Mark, I think the best thing, the council, we just got this like yesterday afternoon.
This morning.
This morning.
I just sent it this morning, yeah.
This morning. That we've all had the chance to read through it. And I think we're all going to need to really study it and digest it a little bit before
Absolutely.
we can, you know, we can make that decision. And, you know, my, my big concern is even with the, the ITC credits, what happens if that changes? You know, what happens if the federal government says, yeah, that's a program that was good right now, but we're only funding what has been spent in fiscal year 2024, and we're not funding anything new in 2025? And that's, that's a, I mean, the Inflation Reduction Act is a, in political circles, is a dirty word.
Yes.
So I think there's, I think there's high likelihood that anything that's associated with that is, is going to be, I mean, clearly, the inflation, I'm not going to get in on my political soapbox, but, you know, inflation reduction and where we are currently when we're going to the grocery store is oxymoron. I mean, they're not the same. So I think everything's going to be on the chopping block on determining what's going to happen. And that, that's my biggest fear, is just the uncertainty that that's, that, that all changes.
And, and that is actually something, as, as we've looked at that, we can actually purchase insurance around the ITC. And it was running 3% to 3.5% two or three weeks ago. And that was anticipating there could be a change in administration. So for, once again, there are a number of insurance products available to protect the city.
It may be, I'm not telling you what to do, but, you know, three or three weeks ago.
I understand.
Is, my guess is that insurance number would be much higher than what it was three weeks ago.
Yep.
So it, it probably would be a good idea to find out where we are on that. But there's a lot of complexity to this project, and, and I don't think anyone's doubting what the overall benefit to the community would be. But there's a huge price tag to that, that, that even if we have a Solid Waste Authority that bonds that money, you know, there is a moral obligation that the city of Murfreesboro would have to those, those funds. And so we're, what I would recommend is please take all the information that Mark's talked about today, talk with Darren. And then if we need to get a special session over the next week or so, that we need to sit down and specifically discuss this, then we, we can do that. The tough thing, Mark, is that, you know, this is a big number to talk about in, in roughly a 45-day time, time period. And we're not really set up to make, it seems like decisions that we make are super fast, or sometimes are not really good. So we want to make sure that we, we make that smart choice. So is there any other questions for Mark?
Mr. Mayor, if I could just add to, to Mr. Wright's questions earlier, that Waste Away has provided the city with a proposed purchase agreement. And I would certainly think that as part of any conversations that council members might have with Mr. Gore, that I'd want to be part of those so I can walk council members through that agreement.
Okay. All right, thank you, Mark. We'll absolutely be in touch. All right, is there any other business from our team members? Any other business from the council? We are going to recess into executive session, and then we can adjourn. Or Adam, how would you would rather, close this meeting and then?
Close this meeting. And, and just for the record, that the executive session is regarding pending litigation.
All right, we'll stay in adjourn.